Ms. Altobello?
Yes.
Ms. Aldera? Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fait? Here. Ms. Lapierre? Mr. Whitley?
Here.
Ms. Colermon? Mr. Delgado?
Here.
Ms. Saratelli? Here.
Announcements of compliance with the Sunshine Law.
Great point.
I'd like to take this opportunity to welcome any of our visitors. You'll have an opportunity to address the board if you have anything to say a little later on in the agenda. Reading of the minutes.
Secretary of the Minutes.
I'm sorry?
Secretary of the Minutes. You said reading of the minutes.
Yes, do you need opportunity to read it?
No, no, that's not what it means. It means the minutes are to be read.
No, would you?
Yeah, that's what it means.
We don't read minutes during meetings. We haven't heard of that.
Unless somebody makes a motion to accept them as presented, they are to be read, and I have heard no motion.
Okay, so we're waiting for that motion.
And I'm waiting for them to be read because there has been no motion made.
I make a motion to accept the minutes as presented.
I second the motion. Ms. Altobello?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fait?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Treasurer's report, the treasurer is not here today, so we don't have the table of the treasurer's report. As well as the presentation and approval of bills, we are going to table that as well. Reports of steering committees?
Yes, we just had a standing committee, we just had a nominating committee meeting just before.
I had an action to let me know.
Well, we just met just before the, before the meeting here, I'm sorry.
Who was on the committee?
Well, Mrs. Dix wasn't, wasn't here, but Mr. Delgado and myself.
Is that the report?
Yeah, we had the, we had the slate that we approved for the, for 2013.
Would you like to meet just for briefly?
Oh, right.
Before you present the?
What, Mrs.?
Yes. President?
Excuse me?
Your representative?
Oh, you want me to read yours?
Please.
Okay, for president, Mrs. Fait. For vice president, Mrs. Aldera. For treasurer, Mr. Delgado, and for secretary, Ms. Lapierre. Okay. It's the last.
Any nominations on the floor, city mayor?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Whitley. Okay, here. I'd like to nominate Mr. Whitley.
I second.
You don't have to, because there's a nomination.
Okay, me. That's it? Reports of special committees, there were no meetings?
Well, excuse me, the Moore Committee, we didn't meet because of Hurricane Sandy. We were supposed to meet in, you know, eventually with you, so.
Well, we scheduled that, and we'll, we have to meet with Mrs. Keating.
Whatever, just let me know.
As well as the report of the library director?
I've covered so much of my report, will deal with Hurricane Sandy and how it impacted the library. We were, we were without.
This is what you've heard in years.
We were with, let's move it back. We were without power at the library October 29th to 30th and 31st. So, of course, we were closed. I conferred with the president, and we really could not open with no power. We reopened on Thursday, November 1st, and we've been keeping our regular hours since then. The damage that we, excuse me, the damage that we sustained was the front fence at the corner, at the corner, corner connection of the fence by the Broad Street entrance, that was damaged. That has been repaired by our new maintenance person, and, you know, the guys, and Mr. Reeves and Mr. James, they all worked together to repair that, so that's been repaired. We had to also, I need to let you know that the Elizabeth, when I say the libraries were closed Monday, Tuesday, and Wednesday, E Court Branch was also closed on Monday, November 5th, because they still did not have power down there. But the, and the Court Branch was closed on Thursday, November 1st, because they had not reopened the community section. I don't know if you noticed, we had the refurbished Red Lion sign that hangs at the corner of Broadway Avenue and Broad Street. It was knocked down and damaged somewhat, and we had that redone when the exterior renovation was done. So, we're in the process of repairing that to rehang it.
Is that insured?
It really doesn't, I mean, it's a small wooden sign, and our, and they're repairing it in-house, so it should be fine. The Fall Concert Series, our, really, the, the jewel in the crown, if you will, was an evening performance by the New Jersey Symphony Orchestra. We had to cancel that one, because that actually was on Thursday night, and, you know, so many, so much of the city was still without power. So, we are trying to reschedule with them for some time in January or February. They could not accommodate us in December. They're just very, very busy, and so we will reschedule, and we'll keep you apprised of when that's going to happen. Mr. Mantow's retirement, we had a retirement brunch for him, it went very well. I think he was very touched, and he, he's been here so much, quite frankly, that I don't feel like he's retired. He was in yesterday, and that's just the makeup. All you have to do is put on your shirt that says it is about public library, and you can work again. But you know what, he's, he's very much involved with the city, so he's in the city often, so I'm sure, you know, this, we won't see him every day as we continue, but I think he misses us. I mean, you don't do something for 20 years and not miss it, so.
He reminds me of the milkman's horse, you know that story?
No.
When they, when, you're much too young.
Oh, thank you.
There's a show, milk was delivered by a horse and wagon.
Okay.
And the horse knew this, knew the route, and would stop at every subscriber, and the milkman would deliver. Well, after the horse was retired, the milkman was retired, and it's still there.
Well, the horse is still coming to the library, so.
A beloved horse.
A beloved horse. And so, he's still, he's very much missed, he's very much missed.
How, you don't mind me asking, how's the new, the new person, how, how's he doing?
The new maintenance person? He, you know, he's adjusting, this is a lot, especially with the three branches. Ms. Eppinger and I were talking about it today, and we will sit down with him after 30 days to see how he's coming and, you know, give him some feedback, but, and you know what? When you fill big shoes, it's not easy, because I said to the staff, please give Mr. Lewis a break, and don't say, well, Joe did it this way, or Joe did it that way, but he seems to be doing okay right now, so.
Okay, reading of communications?
There was just, there was just one thing that came, and it actually, it was for the, it said library, but it's directed to the library for the president, and it really talks about what, and they, and they would like for us to give a copy of it to the mayor, because it really speaks to what the mayor hopefully is looking for when he is appointing board members, some of the areas of expertise that might be needed. And so, what will happen is, I will pass it along to him, because we really have nothing to do with it, but he wanted, it came to you, Mr. Whitley, because they want the board, I think what's happening, not just, just across the board, there are certain, there really are certain attributes that board members need to come to the board with. And so, you know, I think that the trustee association, this is coming from the New Jersey Trustee Association, they're saying, really, you need to key in on what does the board need, and what is the person who is being appointed to the board, what are they bringing that will add to the work that the board has to do? One of the things, quite frankly, and this is just personal, this is not, this is not only, but one of the things that would be so helpful for us to have on the board would be an attorney, because we're always conducting business and trying to determine where we go and how we should do it. So many boards have an attorney representative, this board used to have an attorney representative, not to tell us what to do legally, but to stop us if we're going down a road that we might not necessarily want to go. So, I mean, I certainly don't profess to tell the mayor what to do, but this is just something that the trustees have put together, and they're sending them out to all the, all the mayors who appoint, just to say, you know, would you please consider this when you're making appointments?
So, this came from the New Jersey State?
The New Jersey Trustee Association. Your state board.
Right, okay.
Your state board.
I think another thing we should look for in members, people who know how to get to the board meetings, that would be giving us attendance. Also to our special events.
Unfinished business?
Okay, let me find this. Okay. The first thing that we have, of course, is the, is the committee meeting, and Ms. Saratelli has already indicated that committee didn't meet due to Sandy. So, hopefully by the next board meeting, we'll be able to meet and report back.
Excuse me, you already have a, a proposal from the, from the architect, don't you?
I don't have a proposal, and I, and I really need to put a disclaimer on that. He was the architect who actually worked on the exterior renovation, and I asked him in an informal, unofficial way, if he would go to Elmore with me and just give me some input, but he, but you know, they don't want to be quoted on that. If we want them to do a formal proposal for us, then we have to approach it a different way.
Okay, well, we're gonna have to.
And it might cost, and it might, and of course, usually it's gonna cost. So, that was not really a formal proposal, that is just an informal discussion.
So, that's what we have to get?
So, that's what we have to get, exactly.
When, we're gonna get it, don't we need funds to pay for it?
That's what we're gonna discuss when we meet, how we're gonna go about that.
I lost you somewhere. What's gonna come first, the funds or the expert? Or the meeting?
Well, at the committee meeting, we're gonna discuss what we need for a proposal to share with the stakeholders, actually. Okay, the, the next thing on the old business is we need to approve the 2013 holidays. The holiday list is in your packet, and I wanted to talk about it to make certain that we're not scheduling a meeting at a time where we have to do a change. If there's a holiday or something that the board wants to observe, and you want to change the board meeting, we can change it right now, so.
Excuse me, I just want to ask a question. Did you always get this before Memorial Day and before Labor Day, the Saturday, and maybe the third?
The only, forever. The only Saturdays the library is closed, is the Saturday after Labor Day and the Saturday after Memorial Day.
Well, now we're talking about the before.
The Saturday, no, the Saturday, the Saturday, this, well, the Saturday that precedes those two holidays.
That received.
The boards get.
So, you always had that?
Always. I mean, since I've been here.
No, no, I was just asking, I, I just wanted to know.
They're the only two Saturdays which are always, no problem, the entire year.
Do we, I make a motion to accept the holidays, closing of the holidays for the library?
Okay, Ms. Altobello?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Pass for now, give me a second. I haven't seen this before.
Okay.
Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fait?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
He can abstain, because you have a majority, so you can just put him in.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
We'll go, we'll go to the calendar for board meetings.
Yes.
One of the things that we touched briefly on at the last meeting was a security system for the building. We do have an alarm system if the building is entered into when we close and it's monitored. However, it has, it has come to our attention, and it has been recommended by the police department that we have surveillance devices, cameras in the library. And I have met two times with a representative from Tyco, and they have the state contract. What does that mean? Because they have the state contract, the state has done all the vetting for us, which means we don't have to look for the lowest bidder, they've already found the lowest bidder.
Well, excuse me a moment, we agreed on this, I believe, last month, and you said you were gonna have a representative come in.
Well, this is what, what, I'm gonna tell you exactly what happened. The representative was supposed to come on Tuesday, October 30th, to get together the information so that they could present, and Sandy happened. So, instead of coming then, he came today, and he did the information, the additional information gathering today. And so, his intent is to be here at your December 18th meeting, to make a presentation to you, to tell you about the possibilities, and answer any questions you might have. That was supposed to happen tonight, but that's the reason why we had to push it.
And this is Tyco, right?
This is Tyco.
Okay.
T Y C O.
And they'll definitely give us the lowest?
Their state contract, which means they have been deemed by the state with the lowest cost for this kind of thing. Now, the other thing that I wanted to mention to the board, when I initially had them come in, it was just four cameras inside strategic locations and cam, can you hear me, Ms. Fait? Can you hear me?
Yeah, okay.
And cameras outside, so that, you know, it's trained on our parking lot, and we know what's happening around the building. I asked him today if he would, we're not obligated to do it, but if he could give us a separate price for controls on some of our doors. So that, controls on some of the doors, either a card that will open the door because of proximity, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
And then, or a door that has a code on it. The cheapest device is the card that will, if you swipe it in front of the plate, it will open the door. What is the rationale for that? There are certain offices that really need to be entered, only by people who need to be there. And so, I asked him to look into a control on the administration office, control on the computer lab, a control on the technical services department. This is where all of our new books and videos or CDs now, DVDs where they come in, and that needs to be controlled. I asked him to look for control on the staff room. And so, he's gonna give me a separate quote. What I am hoping will happen, quite frankly, is in light of the incidents that we had here, I am hoping that I will be able to go to the city and see if we had, if they have any emergency funds available for this type of project. But before I did that, I wanted to make certain you had a clear idea of what we were contracting, and once we know what the cost is, then I would like to approach the city to see if there is any emergency fund or capital improvement money that might be available for a project. Now, the, the initial price, and this is not part of the grant, but get ready, the initial price for just cameras is $76,000.
Well, you told me, you told us that.
Okay, good, great, good, good.
For just cameras?
Just cameras.
Well, that's all we spoke about.
That's all we spoke about, yeah, so. But Mr. Delgado, you had a question?
Is it going to have somewhat monitoring the camera, like a security person?
It is an internet-based program, which means we can go on our monitors, the maintenance department, whoever we, whoever we want to monitor, they can go and monitor the different areas, including the remote branches.
Oh, okay, this is including the remote branches, okay, understood.
To get into the lab or whatever, are you gonna have to have special doors in order?
No, they can use the doors in the area. As a matter of fact, today, when he came in, he actually took pictures of the doors, the closures, and, you know.
No, I just wondered if a regular door, you know?
A regular door will work. The only thing that he has to be sure about is that the lock on the door is sound and it works well. But no, no, nothing new as far as doors.
And these are good, like you could zoom in, because working in a school, I know with cameras, you need the ability to zoom in, like if you see something, to be able to.
They're high resolution.
High, okay.
They're high resolution cameras, we wanted something where people would not be indistinguishable.
Right, right, exactly.
You know, it's grainy.
Yes.
Sometimes, but these are high resolution cameras. And it's the type of camera where you see that, see that how that camera looks?
Yes.
Okay, well, this is the glow, but, you know, do you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It has a V.
The little glow?
Glow, yeah, that's the kind of cameras that we will.
And it's visible, that somebody should know that they're.
Yeah, we're not trying to hide the fact.
Exactly, well, that's.
Exactly. As a matter of fact, because we don't want it to be a secret, we don't want people to think we're, we're gonna sign up this area under surveillance, or whatever.
Right, that's what they, that's what they're doing, the top of Bob or studying.
But you know, something that sounds nice, but cameras in use in this area.
They're doing that in the new stores that go up now, they have the little signs out there, to let you know that.
The cameras are here.
And have our security procedures, our current security procedures changed at all in light of the incidents that occurred?
They have.
Okay.
They have, they have changed. We are now, we now have someone already posted on the first floor.
Did the librarian question ever come back?
No, but that's a personal issue, and we'll talk about it.
Mrs. Keating, a very, very old business, I remember last year we voted on budget, and I was told that glass private corrals would be put up on the back third floor.
They're there.
I looked.
Oh, you know, oh, you're, I know what you're talking about, I know what you're talking about. What happened was, we put the study carrels back there, and it's quiet, but the area where we were gonna close it in, we couldn't see it.
So, what happened to the money that we allocated?
We never, the money is in, is still in the account, we never used the money.
Oh, I think it should have been told, that it never happened. Because all that I saw, there were two corral desks.
Yeah, we, we, we were gonna put it back where there's an area, but we can't see back there, we didn't think it would be a good idea.
No, I agree.
But I apologize, that, you said, you are absolutely right, I should have made a formal report to the board, so I apologize.
Okay.
The only thing I have on new business is the calendar, you should have a copy of the calendar of board meetings in your hat, you have?
Yes.
And so, is there any reason why we can't? The board meetings are historically held on the second Tuesday of every month, and if there's no reason for us to change, we need to put approved.
So, okay.
No, I, I looked it up for the, for the holidays that we had a problem with this year, and the meeting is fine.
It's good?
Apparently, the holidays start at the beginning of September sometimes, so.
Did you see any discrepancies or any problems, Mrs. Fait?
I didn't look, but.
Ms. Saratelli? Okay, good.
Because I think she shops at the same shop every, they give out these calendars. They're free.
Okay.
Is that right? Is there anyone from the public who would like to make comments to the board? Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that was, okay. I make a motion to accept the dates provided for board meetings.
Second.
Ms. Altobello?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fait?
Yes.
Ms. Saratelli?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes. Is there anybody from the public who'd like to address the board?
I have one question.
Can you just state your name?
Check it out.
I'm sorry.
The report, in the news report, ready, check it out.
I'm sorry.
The newsletter.
Uh-huh.
The newspapers, in the news report, check it out.
Check it out. Something wrong?
The information has been, in the newspapers are very good to let other people know, and maybe a camp, or movie, or other programs. I have one question. Is any way they develop the database of public information available, on average, how many users came to live there?
How many people coming to?
Every day, or week, or month, based on a book checkout.
Are traffic, are traffic.
You want statistics?
Computer users, and people come to read the newspapers, all details, information. If somebody create the database, that all you discussed every time, it helps to make future projects and save some time, targeted cost of the money, to where most programs are important, and reader and other programs are not important, you cannot, and we, we save the cost, because every institution have monetary profits, this money profits, from the federal government to lowest bottom people, we know that, that we see all this. Now, I, a friend of mine, Mr. Ted, and I talked about, they stopped the home and news tribute, because they cannot subscribe, many newspapers, they cut it off. The rich, the rare, always interested in the good, and we understand that every institutions, every organizations facing a monetary problems, that we see and all of this, from the top level, from federal level to every state level, county levels, and city levels. We, we know that. to established levels and county levels and city levels. We, we know that. You always read the newspaper. So if the database they make details, just like a micro ax, database, that somebody can analyze the data and they focus the most important programs and less important programs, they, they can save the cost. Just, I can, we, the public can have access to know how many people on average or week come to the library, Elmore branch, left of the branch, and Main Library where we are now.
May I? Every year, I have to send a report to the state library indicating those figures because our state aides sometimes are dependent on those kinds of things, just as you indicated. For that kind of information, we collect it and we do an annual report. So if there's any information like that that you want to know, because we can only, we do it on an annual basis. So you are more than welcome to come to the administration office. It is, it is open. It's open records. So any information that you have or that you would like to have on a statistical basis, you are welcome to come and look at my state aid report. Because when you put statistics in a, a vehicle, like the newsletter, the newsletter is intended to promote programs at the library. That's its basic purpose. What is happening at the library programmatically. But as far as statistics are concerned, if you don't give enough and you don't give them in a context that you should, you should look at them, if they really don't mean anything. So if you look at the report as a whole, you can see, because we do a, you can see a comparison for the last three years, what the total circulation was at this building, total circulation at every branch, how many people use the computers. All of that information is available to you. Just come to my office and I will make certain you get whatever you want. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And your, and your point was well taken about looking to cut costs.
Absolutely, my pleasure.
Yeah.
And make a motion to go to closed session?
I second the motion.
Ms. Altobello?
Yes.
Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Saritelli?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
I make a motion to hire supervisor maintenance repair clerk of Lewis at a salary of $55,000.
Second.
Do we have to include, gets them?
Oh, that's, that goes here. It's full time. Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Flapier?
She's not here.
Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Saritelli?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
And Ms. Altobello?
Yes.
And I will, I will try to arrange for him to come to the meeting as much. And we'll just leave him alone right away because his, his stay ends at five, but I'm short of space. So you can leave.
Ms. Saritelli, wait a minute. We have to move for the secretary?
Ah, for short-term member, right?
Do you want, so that has to be a permanent working?
Well, because you've never done it.
Yeah.
And if you wanna do it, you need to.
So I make a motion that we make the secretary in charge of sending out letters of condolences to, for the loss of immediate family, immediate as defined by.
Let's be a little, by the board, for the loss, for the loss of immediate, a personal immediate family of members of the board.
For the loss of, okay, for the loss of.
Because otherwise it could be the whole world.
Immediate families of the members of the board.
Loss of immediate family members.
Of the board.
Okay, so Ms. Deppus, Mr. Delgado, who will second it? I say I will second her. I just thought that was a done deal. Okay, Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Saritelli?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
And Ms. Altobello?
Yes.
The next motion to close the meeting?
Second.
And for second, Mr. Delgado. Okay, Mr. Delgado?
Yes.
Ms. Dix?
Yes.
Ms. Fite?
Yes.
Ms. Saritelli?
Yes.
Mr. Whitley?
Yes.
And Ms. Altobello?
Yes.